Good evening. Tonight is Monday, April 9, 2018. This is the Westwood Board of Selectmen. We will begin, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll grant Westcat permission to video and audiotape tonight's proceeding. Anybody else wish to videotape or audiotape? Hearing none. We will jump right into Chairman's update, and we want to congratulate our town clerk, Dottie Powers, who has received the designation of the Master Municipal Clerk. The MMC program is the second and most, and more advanced of two professional designations granted by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. This achievement requires a great deal of on-the-job work, as well as academic work, and we are one of only 25 clerks in Massachusetts who have this designation within their municipality. So we express our sincere congratulations to Dottie. Moving right along. Trying to figure out how to use a laptop. And I will get there. Oh, perfect. Okay. Don't go far.
I'm kind of stuck here whether I like it or not.
So, the Board of Selectmen had previously announced the change of the planned town meeting, annual town meeting, and the new date has been set for May 30, 2018. And in addition to that, there are two zoning amendments that we need to remove this evening. The change for the annual town meeting was mainly driven by the Board's desire to acquire some more information as we move forward on the land disposition agreement pertaining to Islington Center. So there are two zoning amendments for the warrant article that need to be addressed. One is the proposed bylaw pertaining to the square footage of certain retail. I can't get there. Okay. See? Okay. Oh, there we go. Okay. So we're removing two zoning articles. One was from the Planning Board, and one had to do with square footage requirements in the flexible mixed-use overlay district. Any thoughts, comments? Mike, am I missing anything?
No. That's the two bylaws that you need. The one in particular on the square footage was because there's been a modification in the size of the CVS project. At one point, CVS was looking for a building that was over 10,000 square feet, which was the reduced amount in the new overlay district. They agreed to something under 10,000 square feet. There was a time when they were also proposing to do a drive-through. If they had to go under 10,000 square feet, then they heard that that wasn't preferred, and so they modified and eliminated the drive-through and got themselves under 10,000 square feet. So as a result, this article, this article is no longer needed at town meeting. They're pretty much as of right for that district.
No, just, I know there've been some questions about our authority to do it, but I just wanted to say that it's governed by Mass. General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 9, gives us the authority to move town meeting. There've been some question, at least on social media, about how we could do it according to our charter. So I just wanted to clear that up while we're here, is that it is by Mass. General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 9.
What entitles you to do it is because, this way rather than the other way, is because you have not signed a warrant. You have not officially, by signing the warrant, indicated a date that you were certain to, so you're not, you have not yet advertised. This is the preferred way to do it, so that everybody's notified in advance. The other procedure that was talked about the last time was a procedure you would actually, the Board had actually used back in, I think it was 2004. The reason why we had to do it the other way was we had.
Already posted.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Can we have a legal opinion from KP Law on this?
We do. Yes.
Okay.
And I included that in your packet.
So I move that we, acting on the Planning Board's request, vote to remove articles titled "Zoning Amendments-Housekeeping" and a second article, "Amendments to the Zoning Bylaw to Permit Retail Sales and Service Greater Than 10,000 Square Feet by Special Permit in FMUOD Districts," from the 2018 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None. I further move that the Board vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Section 39, to set the date for the annual town meeting to be Wednesday, May 30, 2018, rather than on the first Monday in May, which would have been May 7, as would otherwise have been required by Section 2-6-1 of the Town Charter, to allow the town to finalize the details related to the Islington Center project, and further to direct the town administrator to provide notice of such new date for the annual town meeting in any way that he deems appropriate to provide effective notice to the public.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Does that mean open? Public can make a comment?
Sure.
Okay. So could you just explain?
Can you just identify yourself? Sorry.
Jeffrey Brown, very special. So can you just explain the town meeting for the May 7?
There won't be a meeting on May 7.
So there will be nobody showing up?
Nothing.
No.
So no, you can't get, there won't be anybody at that high school?
No.
I'm sure there'll be a lot of people playing lacrosse, soccer, things like that. But there will not be a town.
No, because, because we have not advertised it yet, so therefore we are able to not have to open town meeting and postpone it. So we do not have to do that. Because we did not post the warrant, sign the warrant, post the warrant legally, so it has not been posted, so that's why we can do it.
So the book that comes out is going to say May 30?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yep. No, sorry, second.
Anybody else? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I've sent a post got every single household in the community already advertising the date.
Yep.
Are we going to move to the election warrant?
We are.
Yes.
So I move that the Board of Select, are we ready to do that?
We are.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen sign the 2018 Annual Election Warrant and direct the town administrator to file the warrant with the town clerk so it may be posted within the four precincts in town for notice of the election.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that the Board of Selectmen sign the 2018 Annual Town Meeting Warrant calling for town meeting to be held on Wednesday, May 30, 2018, as previously voted, and that the town administrator file the warrant with the town clerk's office for proper posting and distribution within the four precincts in town.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. Okay. So we have an appointment to the Conservation Commission this evening. Joining us is Vesna Maneva.
Yeah, Vesna Maneva, 1048 High Street.
Just so the people at home can...
Why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Conservation Commission?
So I'm a relatively new resident of Westwood. We moved in August after 15 or so years living in Arlington, Massachusetts, and it has been my desire to get involved on a local level with issues of, that have to do with open space. And this is a great opportunity. I got to meet the Conservation Commission. I went to a couple of meetings, and I think with my profession as a landscape architect, you know, experienced landscape architect and registered in Massachusetts, I think I can contribute my knowledge and my desire to preserve the natural environment and to minimize the impact of, you know, development and human actions within the, you know, our jurisdiction.
Well, thank you for stepping forward and volunteering your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you've met with Nora?
Yes, we actually had extensive conversation on Saturday because I came out to a site visit that the Conservation Commission was having at Reynolds Farm and advised the Conservation Commission members from our expertise as a landscape architect.
I have to admit, I did not know that they could get a master's degree in landscape architecture.
Yes.
You need to know your horticulture, right? I think this is great.
You're welcome. You were already at the joint meeting last week, so it was very good that you were there early to get involved. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So I move we appoint Vesna Maneva?
Yes, is that right? That's right.
To the Conservation Commission as an associate member. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. As an associate member for a term, we're all getting used to using these lovely things, for a term to expire June 30, 2020.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. So congratulations. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
We've also received interest from Lou Rizzoli in serving as a community member on the Housing Partnership Fair Housing Committee. In 1987, Lou was appointed to the newly-created Housing Partnership as one of the founding members. In 1988, he assisted in the passage of a home repetition to form the Housing Authority to which he was subsequently elected and served as chairman until 1998. During that time, Lou assisted in the consideration and permitting of both the Cedar Hill and Chase Estates developments, two affordable housing developments. In his role as chairman of the Housing Authority, Lou assisted the authority in the purchase of the first affordable rental housing building located on Grafton Avenue. Lou is a longtime member of the Westwood community. He has served on a number of boards, including the Disability Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Housing Partnership. Elected Lou as a member of the Board of Assessors. He has done numerous volunteer activities throughout Westwood and was my constitutional law professor.
There you go.
So with that, I would ask for...
Did I ask what kind of a grade you got? Oh, never mind. We'll save that for...
Despite my grade, I will vote for him.
I think it's great that he is, would like to come back on the Housing Committee. So I move that we appoint Lou Rizzoli to be a member of the Housing Partnership Fair Housing Committee for a term to expire on June 30, 2019.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. And then on the Healthcare Review Committee, this was established several years ago when the legislature gave greater authority to the municipalities in managing healthcare for employees. The human resources, the town administrator and the human resources director have discussed various issues related to healthcare, including healthcare split between the town and the employees, dental coverage, and other liability related to pensions. The human resources director is requesting that Anthony Burke, who is now the Fire Association President in Westwood, replace Craig Templeton on the Healthcare Review Committee.
I move that we appoint Anthony Burke, who is now the Fire Association President, to replace Craig Templeton on the Healthcare Review Committee for a term to expire June 30, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, okay, sorry. We have two nominees for election commissioners. This is necessary as we prepare for the annual town election. The town clerk has given us the names of Carol Lefebre of 122 High Rock Street and Wendy Wilhelm of 40 Church Street.
Okay, so I move we appoint Carol Lefebre and Wendy Wilhelm to be election officers for a term to expire June 30, 2018.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The approval of Special Education Reserve Account Transfer. The, in 2017, town meeting established a special education fund to hold funds for special education costs and receive any Medicaid revenue the schools may receive. Distribution from this account to pay for special education costs requires a vote of a transfer by both the School Committee and the Board of Selectmen. The school administration had requested a transfer of $250,000, and the school committee voted their approval at their March 15, 2018, meeting. The school requests and school committee minutes have been included in this packet. And Mike, I think, I know Pam and Heath Patraca from the school department have worked this out. This is simply moving existing dollars in between accounts.
That's right. At one point, the monies just came in and were able to be used by the school department. Then the state established this process by putting it into an account and then having it voted out and approved by the Board of Selectmen subsequent to a vote of the school committee.
Okay.
And this is one of the new accounts we've created, right?
It is one of the new accounts. I think this is probably the first time you've transferred them.
Okay. I move we approve transfer of the funds in the amount of $250,000 from the Special Education Reserve Account to the Special Education Cost Account.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For the 11th year, Westwood will again be hosting a Pan Mass Challenge Kids Ride. This is scheduled this year for Sunday, June 10, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., starting at the Martha Jones School. Elena Elman and Sarah Miron, the PMC Kids Ride co-coordinators, are requesting permission to hold a charity cycling event in Westwood again this year. As the ride coordinators, they would like to begin planning for this event. This is a really special event every year, and it is great to see it. It has been such a community event. See all the kids ride at this route is really special, so I would ask for a motion for approval.
Yeah, I just have a question, Mike. It says that the routes are approved by Westwood Police Department, and Andrea Kelly will be working closely with Sergeant Sicard. Is she one of the coordinators? Because she's not one of the people mentioned in this packet, so I'm just wondering who she is.
Yeah, I think there's like a group of, sorry, there's a group of them together.
Okay.
So the co-coordinators are those two. They do all of the high-level, yeah, and I think Andrea does the route, so.
So I move we approve the 11th Annual Pan Mass Challenge Kids Ride on Sunday, June 10, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Martha Jones School with refreshments contingent upon approval from the Board of Health and the Building Department.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Some good news, Mike. The town has come to terms with its police union?
Yes.
For a term commencing retroactively to 2016 through June of 2020. And I know to you and to Joan, our human resources director, and to Chief Silva, one of the major challenges we have is the recruitment and retention of folks as they move on, sometimes to more lucrative cities and towns and state police and otherwise. So I, in reading this, it appears that we've tried very hard to restructure the step system, try to retain some people a little bit longer. So I think that's a great way to be creative and collective bargaining.
Modify competitive education reimbursement?
Right.
Or education incentive program that we have that mirrors but doesn't, isn't the Quinn bill, but it mirrors it. So it's close.
I move we vote to approve and sign three copies of the Memorandum of Agreement between the Town of Westwood and the Westwood Police Association Local 174 for a term of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017. And I further move to vote to approve and sign three copies of the Memorandum of Agreement between the Town of Westwood and the Westwood Police Association Local 174 for a term of July 1, 2017 through July, through June 30, 2020.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Reserve Fund Transfer Account for the purposes of an appraisal and environmental study of Islington Center. This request is to have the Board transfer $25,500 from the Reserve Fund to fund the appraisal of town property and an environmental geotech analysis and report of the proposed site for Wentworth Hall and its addition to Islington Center. Mike, do you want to add anything to that? Where are we in the process?
Well, on that one, we've scheduled through Dan's office to have the geotech and environmental study conducted at the site. So both of, I think both of them will be done at the same time? Or are we just doing the environmental?
They are trying to schedule, I mean, you need a drill rig, and April is a really hard time to schedule a drill rig.
Can't they just borrow one from the T? They got plenty of...
But they have a drill rig scheduled. They have one day scheduled, and if they can get a second day, they'll do it at the same time. If they can't get a second day, they will do the environmental because that's where the most uncertainty lies.
That's the most important part, yeah.
The geotech, you know, they'll get a pretty good feel for it when they do the environmental anyway, because they'll have the soil, so boring. So, and the anticipation is, we're going to, we will have a verbal on the cost of soil excavation prior to the Finance Commission meeting on the 23rd.
So Dan, just, I'm sorry, interrupt. Can you just tell, so for everyone who doesn't know, right, who's not in the business, what's the difference between the environmental and a geotech analysis?
Sure. When you do real estate development, you always do what's called a geotech analysis, which is you evaluate the soils for their suitability for supporting the structure, in essence. So if it's all, you know, I mean...
Sand is not as good as clay.
Sand is not as good as clay, you know. You want to make sure there's no organic material, because of course that's going to deteriorate over time, and you'll have a driveway, like, or you'll have a building with a driveway like mine, which drops two feet in one corner. The environmental work is warranted in this case because the site is a former Texaco station, and, you know, it was closed out. You know, Texaco cleaned it up, but they cleaned it up to a commercial standard, which means that there continues to be low levels of petroleum contamination in the ground. What we have to do there is we have to, so that means you can't send those soils, you can't reuse them, you're going to have to send them to some sort of secure facility. The, you know, there's a tiered grouping of facilities with, if it was true hazardous waste, you have to send it someplace up in Maine. They'll run those tests, and they'll figure out where they can send the soils. And then it's just a per-ton cost, which is easy to figure because we know the amount of excavation.
I mean, actually, I do know, but I figured for everyone at home who's asking, what are these things for? And what are they actually looking to do? So, thank you, Dan.
The other thing that I was told is that because it was, we're basically testing because it's a former gas station, that if there is contamination, that the soils probably would be suitable for reuse in the creation of pavement or asphalt. And so it's not as costly to dispose of as some other materials you might find in other, another type of contamination, so.
Thanks. Thank you, Dan. Anything else?
Any appraisal, I'll just add a little bit on the appraisal, because it's the other thing we're looking for money for. We have, you transferred the money for the appraisal the last time. Since that time, I felt it would be appropriate, and I talked to your appraiser. The most important thing is to get the appraisal of the four parcels that we're selling, because that's what we're really after. But he's going, the developer's going to be giving us a parcel back, almost an acre parcel back. That will have some value, and so it's important for the town to completely understand the transaction, have an appreciation for what is the value of the land that will be transferred back to the community, so. That's what he's going to be adding.
Okay.
I'm just reading what's, the town, an additional 1,500.
That's an additional 1,500.
No, it didn't, just...
Down the bottom, it's in the...
No, 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 I'm just reading what is in the body of it.
Yeah. We dropped off the 500 for some reason.
Okay. All right. I move we approve the transfer of $25,500 in total, 1,500 of that for the purpose of obtaining an additional appraisal on the properties in Islington Center, and 24,000 for the obtaining an environmental geotech analysis and report.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay. Sorry, was there any comment from the public?
Just on the, Jeffrey Brown, very special, just on the Cohen property, I had asked at the last meeting. So would the developer then be doing that? Because that was also part of the Texaco. So do you know...
Well, the town will be doing, will be doing an analysis right on the edge of the property, of the Cohen property.
Right.
And we should be able to determine whether or not there's anything on the Cohen property from that vantage point, because the Cohen property is actually up gradient of the, of any contamination we expect on the site. We don't expect anything on the Cohen property, but we'll be right on the board, so if there is something, we will find it.
So you only see the, whatever they find, you can just remove that soil, then, and then put new soil that you build up, basically? It's not as if you could never fill anything on it?
No, that's...
It's remediation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's true, including unsuitable soils, by the way. Not just a contaminated site, but as Dan was saying, in a geotech situation where you, where you'd find peat, for instance, which is an unsuitable soil, you'd remove the peat and you'd replace it with some suitable materials.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Future of our Selectmen meetings? I'm thinking we should have one more this month, and I can't do the 30th. 23rd?
We have the FinCom on the 23rd.
All right. So should we be meeting before that FinCom meeting?
Just that you schedule a meeting an hour before.
Right. Right. Okay.
If anything that comes in, and there will be.
It was just originally scheduled as a regular Selectmen's meeting, knowing that it's only an hour. It just, we just changed the agenda a little bit.
Is the FinCom starting at 7:30 or 7?
I believe 7:30. Did they post it?
7:30, it says library on the map, you get, on the calendar, you can see.
Yeah. I think she posted it today.
Use your iPad and get to the calendar.
I'm there. But I know she posted it this week, so I will double check.
Okay. So 6:30 on April 23, 2017? Oh, okay.
Let me slide up, I need to get the calendar.
They are meeting at 7.
7?
FinCom is starting at 7.
Yeah, you have 7:30 here, but okay.
On Wednesday, May 2, is the Roy London Award.
That's at 7:00 p.m.
It's at 7:00 p.m.
You could do May 1, May 3. You could do May 7 now, because May 7 is, oh, you can't do? I wasn't listening, sorry.
No, I was, I was going to say May 7.
I can't do May 7.
Okay.
Only two days I can do, May 7 and June 18. Because that's the Gridiron Football Golf Tournament.
What about May 14?
I'm going to be on the table.
You know, we can do the 21st, but we can do one, like Tuesday the 1st. Can you do that, John? You said you could do the 30th.
I could do Tuesday the 1st.
Yes, you can do the 1st, the night before the Roy London.
Looks like I can.
Okay. So Tuesday the 1st.
So April 23, 6:30, May 1, regular, and May, did you say May 14? No. No, you said no, May 14, May 21.
May 21, yes.
Regular. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Are you stopping at May?
Yeah, well, do, well, you'll have a meeting on the 30th, possibly before annual town meeting, 6:30. So we'll book that up at the high school.
Under the circumstances of town meeting being late, the Board should schedule a meeting on May 31 to reconstitute the Board.
Say that again?
The Board should meet on May 31 to reconstitute the Board. I don't think it should wait longer.
Does that work? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? I think we're good through May, right? We can hold off on June? Okay. Okay. We are looking to approve minutes from Monday, February 12, 2018, Tuesday, February 20, 2018, Monday, March 5, 2018, Monday, February 26, 2018. Okay, we are looking to approve minutes from Monday, February 12, 2018, Tuesday, February 20, 2018, Monday, March 5, 2018, Monday, February 26, 2018, Monday, March 19, 2018, Friday, March 23, 2018, and Monday, March 26, 2018.
Christine, how are we going to do this?
So in front of you, I did, we.
There's two of them.
Only two in front of you, March, February 12 and 26 were some minor changes that we pulled together today.
Okay.
If you have further changes, we can make them right now. For further suggestions, I do have some additional edits that I have not made that I just received, so I can make those as well. Most of the, all of these edits are pretty much just word cleanup to make sentences correct. None of it changes really the content that's presented in the minutes. Yeah, clarifications. So what I was planning on doing, just because there's so many minutes and so many changes that have been presented, if we could go through and do vote as amended on them, and if you have additional edits, we'll take them. We'll send them to you in the morning as redlined, so you can confirm that I got all the edits that we talked about in the next few minutes.
I'm only good on two sets of minutes here. I haven't gone through lately.
So can we, can we just for tonight do February 12 and 26?
I'm prepared to.
Does that cause a problem for you, though?
No.
No? Okay. You agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have redlined February 12. I'm okay with those. I'm willing to move their approval, but our.
Yeah.
You guys.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
All right. I move we approve the minutes from February 12, 2018, as amended in our materials tonight.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close down.
Oh, you know what? February 20th? Is only, is that me, it was the meeting, it's a very short, the board of selectmen announced that the purpose of the meeting was to convene an executive session.
Right.
We just have to capture those.
Okay, it's a one pager.
It's a one pager.
Mm-hmm.
And that was related to potential litigation at University Station.
That's filter requirement, they have to meet in open session.
Right.
Where's the record of it?
It's a one pager.
Is this on page 76?
Yeah, it, it looks a little funky in your.
77.
It does look.
It's just a one pager that was in your packets.
Page number 77, Nance.
Well, that's March 5.
Or February 20th. Number two, click number two.
What I have here.
On the right.
Age 77.
See on the left-hand side, Nance, click the date. No, the left-hand side, yeah.
Age 7, I have.
On the column, press, just press the date, okay.
That's where I am.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a one pager. That's not what's up here.
That's it.
That's it. That's all, that's how it looks and that's why it looks like this in the packet, February 20, executive session to convene, because they're not.
Why does it look the way I'm at?
Because it's not a full set of minutes and it only attaches itself directly to the agenda item.
I like looking at the hard copy.
I know.
This is going to take a learning curve for me, too.
Oh, boy.
I think I'll always print the minutes. I can explain how they attach themselves in an email.
Save it. I move we approve the minutes from February 20, 2018.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Do you need this back, Christine?
If you're not going further.
Well, we're going to go to the 26th, but I have that. I just don't want to. Okay. Now we have February 26. We have an updated version in front of us tonight that's redlined.
Redlined, yeah. Christine, so you want to deadline them when you send them to us? No, because it's a PDF, right?
No.
You have to send it as a word.
Yeah, it goes in as a PDF, unfortunately.
When you emailed it to us, it was a word?
It was a word, yeah.
Okay. I move approval of the minutes from February 26, 2018, as in our packets delivered to us tonight.
As amended, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that's it for minutes for this evening, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we are at the point in the agenda for other businesses that may properly become before the board. Anybody? You identify yourself.
Good evening, yes, and everybody here. My name is Nadima, I live in Beach, Brazil. I live at 32 Sixth Street. I'm here because I would like to know if this board is planning on remedy the violation of our town charter with respect to the email that I sent on March 21. We have five individuals who are members of our Finance and Warrant Commission in our town charter, chapter 7, section 3, paragraph 7-3-1. A finance and warrant commission of 15 members shall be appointed for three-year overlapping terms. Members shall serve without compensation and no member may hold any other elective or appointive town position during the member's term in office. I did receive.
Not, excuse me, can you sit in the chair here? I'm sorry. It's not picking up on the video. Sorry, thank you. Okay, I'll, on March 21, I sent an email to Christine and I copied Tom McCusker advising her that I believe that five members of our Finance and Warrant Commission are in violation of our town charter. And it's chapter 7, section 3, paragraph 7-3-1, because of potential conflicts of interest. And then I got an email the next day from Mike Gillette, and I, I don't understand it. I actually disagree with it. It basically says, you know, ad hoc committees. I think our town charter is clear. Peter Kane was a member of the Westwood Environmental Action Committee in 2014. And then our town moderator appointed Mr. Kane to the Finance Commission. And we had Selectman Hyde, Selectman Ahern, and Selectman, I don't know who the other one was, I forget right now. And they, there was minutes of a meeting where Peter had to resign from the Westwood Environmental Action Commission to serve on the Finance Commission. And I'd like to know what the town's going to do about this, because it's a clear violation.
So, Nad, I don't, we don't agree that it's clear. I think the town has provided you with a response. I understand you disagree with it, but what is it that you need explained further?
The definition of appointive is relating to or filled by appointment.
So we hear you.
And those five individuals that are, that have other appointive positions are serving on our Finance and Warrant Commission, and it's a, it's a conflict of interest.
Okay, so you have written an email to the town? The town has responded to you? That's the response I can offer?
I believe in one case.
I, I respect that you disagree with the interpretation of the town?
And there is one case where there was, there was a problem. We corrected that. It was inadvertently, there was a member of that commission, committee, it was the election officer, who was an election officer before being appointed to the Finance Commission. We didn't catch it. She continued to serve as an election officer until I received the email. We realized that that was a problem, and we asked that individual if she would agree to not, to put her, put her position with, as an election officer, which is only a couple of times a year, on hold until such time as she stepped away from the Finance Commission. She said she'd be happy to do so, and did. In the other instances, they were all ad hoc committees that the board of selectmen appoints at your discretion, and you include the membership that you think is warranted for that particular purpose. And you did so, and then included Finance Commission members. It is not in the same realm of the committee as, as being referenced in the article or the, the section of the charter. There is another section of the charter which gives the board of selectmen the authority to appoint special ad hoc committees at your discretion. In the instance of the individual who was asked to step aside, that individual was on an ad hoc committee as well. But in that instance, that ad hoc committee was seeking funding and seeking articles in front of town meeting. You remember to establish a green, to qualify for the green communities. And for that reason, it was felt that it would not be wise to have that individual serving that purpose. That person wasn't selected because he was a Finance Commission member to serve on that ad hoc committee. That person was self-appointed to that, to that ad hoc committee, which was for a different purpose.
Thank you. So thanks for bringing it to our attention. It sounds like we've resolved the one issue.
So this is a political issue?
No, I think it's an interpretation of our charter issue.
And I, I think there's only one interpretation. That's my opinion, and with, with respect to this board.
We thank you for your opinion.
Okay. I just wanted to get it out there, so the residents know. Thank you.
The residents should know that we take these very seriously. We thank all the members of the community who step forward and volunteer their time to serve on boards and committees. We are lucky in this town.
Please don't, I, I disagree. I disagree.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to be on record as thanking those who step up and serve.
Okay.
Okay. Any other public or press issues? All right, at this time, the board of selectmen will be going into executive session to discuss one issue related to possible litigation with University Station, which would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if discussions were in open session. The board will be returning to open session.
I move we go into executive session for the aforementioned reason.
I'll second.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. So I would expect, time-wise?
15 minutes.
15, 20 minutes, I expect will be in executive session? Thank you. The board of selectmen will reconvene in open session. So the issue at hand involves the memorandum of understanding with the town of Westwood and University Station Phase 2 LLC. The board had discussed this in open session on February 26, 2018, when it gave approval to Mr. Gillette, Mrs. Lockne, and our outside counsel, Daniel Bailey, to work on a memorandum of understanding with University Station Phase 2 LLC. So I've asked Mr. Bailey to explain where we were and where we are going and what this means.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I would like Mike Norre to jump in as well. This all relates to the proposed and now approved Pulte condominium project at University Station. Our development agreement and our zoning provide that before any development can go forward, the proponent, in this case, New England Development or Pulte, has to demonstrate that there are no unmitigated adverse impacts, either as a result, there won't be any as a result of what they're proposing, and that there aren't any as a result of prior development. In this particular case, when they came forward with additional housing, there was the potential for an unmitigated impact because of the construction of the 64 units at Bridges, having been treated by the state as residential units rather than commercial units. There, there was no offsetting affordable units at Bridges. Anything, you know, like Pulte has to be 10% affordable, okay? The reason we have that 10% is so that you don't add units and start getting the deterioration of the, your subsidized housing inventory. So there was an issue. Mike Norre and I entered into negotiations with the developer. We reached a memorandum of understanding that was approved by this board on February 26, signed February 27. That memorandum of understanding, and I'll go over the key elements of it in a minute, but it said that the party shall work diligently to put together a formal amendment of the development agreement that would memorialize the memorandum of understanding. It said we would get that done by April 6. That date has been extended to tomorrow, April 10. So what does the memorandum of understanding say? It basically covers four or five things. The development agreement provides that, it has a section on building permit fees. These are the fees that get submitted to the building department whenever somebody pulls a building permit, and they're quite considerable. Because of the need for the town to set up, really, a satellite business, a building department down at University Avenue, this agreement was set up so that we could take in fees, put them, you know, separately account for them. And what it says is, any fees that the town didn't spend would be returned to the developer. And if the fees were not sufficient, because we really, I mean, we hadn't done this before, so we didn't know whether the fees were going to be sufficient, if the fees were not sufficient, so if, for example, our costs of reviewing plans and inspections and everything were $200,000 more than we took in, we could recover that $200,000 from the developer. So turns out, there was more there than, you know, than we needed. There was $589,000 in building permit, excess building permit fees for Phase 1. There was also another $315,000 for the, two Phase 2 buildings that have been constructed, those being the courtyard by Marriott and the Brigham and Women's that's under construction. We negotiated with the developer, two main things on that. One was that the town would keep $489,000 of the Phase 1 fees. The $100,000 would be returned to the developer. We also negotiated that all fees going forward would be kept by the town, with one caveat, that I'll get to in a minute. The thinking there is, we no longer have a satellite office down at University. The buildings now are one by one. It's not a mega project, and so it should be dealt with like we deal with anything else. The $300,000 in Phase 2 fees were addressed by, the town gets to keep those, but what we've agreed with the developer and what we're recommending to you tonight is that the town give the developer 150,000, a 50% discount on the first $300,000 in building permit fee applications that it makes after the Pulte project. So the next thing comes in, maybe it's an office building. That's one of the things they've talked about, is maybe a 40,000 or 50,000 square foot office building. Those building permit fees would be discounted by 50% up to a cap of $150,000. The MOU required that certain drainage adjustments be completed. That's been done. It also said that with respect to future housing at University Avenue, that there won't be any future housing until the total amount of commercial value is 75%. And this was done directly in response to the town's concerns about the split tax rate. Yeah, we, the reason, one of the big reasons for this development in the first place was to try to retain the split tax rate. And if there was, you know, the more commercial you can have, the better for the split tax rate. So what we negotiated was that in the future, no more than one quarter of the value of additional development down there can be in residential. I didn't say that quote as well as I should have. Better way to say it is that for every 25 cents that gets spent on residential, there's got to be a corresponding 75 cents on commercial. Again, that will keep residential development down. I also like to remind the board that right now, with the Pulte project, there's, the master plan doesn't have, you know, while our zoning provides up to 650 units, the master plan itself is capped out at 450 units. So they would have to amend the master plan, the developer, come back and identify a new location for housing. location for housing. You know, that's, that's about it. You know, one, one other thing, the radio communications. One of the things that we had talked to the developer about in terms of mitigation was the police and fire emergency communications don't work as well at University Avenue as the town would like because of some of the differences in, in vertical down there. The town has money as a result, still has money as a result of the initial development agreement, sufficient to install, we think, radio equipment that will address that issue. So we focused instead on trying to get as much money as we could to address affordable housing. That's what the $489,000 and the $300,000 are intended to do, is to address the town's affordable housing needs, to assure that the town can maintain its 10% subsidized housing status and thereby be protected from any unfriendly 40Bs. I've already talked too much, so...
(laughing)
And, you know, there's, you know, there's a lot of planning and legalities to this, but, you know, Mike Nora and I are recommending that the Selectmen approve this. You know, there were a couple of contingencies in the MOU that had been satisfied. One was that the Pulte special permit be granted. And so I'll stop there and just take questions unless Nora or Mike have anything to add.
I would just add that there is language in the development agreement that addresses the percentage, the proportion of commercial to residential in this development, and as we approach the end, it's intended, this language is intended, to ensure that we get far more value on the commercial sector than we're going to realize in the residential sector. So as the project finishes to build up, we were flexible as it built out, you know, at some point, the residential was preceding the commercial, but as we come, come to the finish line, we need to make sure that it's a little tighter than we've been thus far.
So can I just ask a couple of questions? So if we go way back, the maximum number of residential units was 650.
And it still is.
It still is, okay.
That's, that's the bylaw, right?
That's the bylaw.
And, and the development agreement both referenced that.
So as we sit here today, Gables is 300 units?
350. 350, and Pulte is 100.
And Pulte is 100.
So there are 450 of a maximum 650 residential units approved today.
And Gables, do you know the occupancy rate?
It's over 94%. I don't know exactly.
Okay.
It fluctuates, but that's, that's a standard, fully occupied building.
So, okay, so I just want to be clear, though, that this has nothing to do with that cap, and the cap could only be amended by the whole of town.
It doesn't, it does not change the cap. It delays the period of time until you get to the cap. It stretches out the period of construction to require commercial construction first.
And I think the, you know, I actually, I like the idea of the discounted building permit fees, because it may incentivize, too, right?
Yeah.
To build some more commercial, or the office space. Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm fine. You have any?
No, I've been through it several times, so...
I think you've done what we asked you to do, and I think the terms reflect our wishes to control whatever residential is added and challenge them. It's got to be commercial first.
Your motion?
Do we have what, any particular language we need to do, so we just accept the terms of the amended development agreement?
Move to approve the Second Amendment to Development Agreement.
Thank you. I move approval of the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement for, what's the formal title I want to use of the development?
University Station Phase 2.
Yeah, University Station.
University Station, thank you.
Development Agreement.
Yeah, I already said Development Agreement. I just want to make sure I gave the right reference.
Is she done? Are you done?
I'm done.
All right, I'll second.
Any comment, questions?
Do the Bridges units go into that cap? Are they part of that cap? So it's 650, so it's 350?
No.
No, no, no. Oh, I'm sorry, Bridges, yeah. Bridges is not counted.
They don't count.
Gables does. Gables, and Pulte, the new condominium.
At the time, it was not considered residential.
Right.
So was it not originally included in the 650?
Great question, though.
But it will be in the future?
It will not.
Only, only from the state, right?
Yeah, so under the development agreement, it does not contribute. It does not contribute. The Commonwealth changed the classification of long-term care facilities, but that doesn't trigger a change to a contract between the town and the developer. It does trigger a change in the formula that determines our subsidized housing inventory. So we, believe me, we would like to have it contribute to both, but the first, the development agreement is a private action, and the second is a government action, and one does not necessarily drive the other.
So when you said the 450 in the master plan, what is...
650.
Oh, 650.
So there's a, there's a cap in the master plan of 650. I just want a clarification that this does not do anything to the cap.
The cap is still in place.
Because I think the cap means a lot to people. I think that's when the town came out and voted to approve University Station, that everybody knew in their mind, you know, 650, and that stays. What, what changes really is kind of a formula to how we would get there. We think the formula is more beneficial to us in the long term.
Right, the approval, when it went to town meeting in 2013, what was approved was up to 650 units of residential, of units, dwelling units, and up to, it was more than 64. 64 were completed. I think it might have been 86, or...
Eighty-four.
There was, there was a specific number of assisted living facilities that were, were approved. They only ended up constructing 64, and then we learned that they would be counted as residential, taxed for residential purposes. But they're not dwelling units under our bylaw. They're separate.
Dan, Dan, just so people understand, so the first development agreement had a 2/3, 1/3, right?
The very first one back on, you know, Westwood Station. Yeah.
And so we've cut that back now to 75, 25.
Yeah, that was also 1,000 units.
It's actually even less than 75, 25, because the way this is written, it says that the residential unit should be no more than 25% of the commercial development. So it's not 25% of 100%, it's 25% of 75%. So it's a, it's a slightly lesser value.
And I think, I mean, just to expand on that a little bit, the idea in everybody's mind back in 2013 when this is approved, was that it just didn't turn into a whole bunch of residences down there, that it actually was a shopping center that had residences.
Residences that encouraged the...
Right.
...activity of the shopping center, right, but that they are limited.
So we believe this solidifies that, but they're good questions. Any other questions?
And then on the land, how much land is actually not developed yet? Twenty acres or whatever?
Yeah, probably...
Five, on University, 11 at the top of the hill.
Yeah, probably about 18, a little bit more than that if you count the Canton Street parcel, which is being held in case the town needs to use it. Probably just, just under, a hair under 20 acres. And the original development was 130... 130 acres.
Yeah.
So by land, a very small portion left, but it's office, potentially office, so it's valuable land. We're hoping we'll see 300,000 square feet or more of, of commercial development.
Any other questions? No? Good questions? No? So we have a second. You all set?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, done. Thank you both. That was a lot of work.
Yeah.
I...
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, we have a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, done. Okay, so our next meeting is...
What, what was that exhibit?
On...
23rd.
23rd, just before we go to sync on.
Okay, the Board of Selectmen will be meeting on April 23rd at 6:30 at the library prior to the start of the Finance Commission's meeting. Thank you all, a meeting, small meeting.